Good evening. Welcome to the Board of County Commission's Special Meeting Regarding the Consideration of the Options Subsequent to Circuit Court Ruling Striking the Ballot Language Regarding the Transportation Sales Surtax Referendum on October 13th, beginning at 5:00 p.m. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Overman.
I mean, not a roll call vote, as for roll call, rather.
Overman.
Yeah, here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Kemp.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much for being here, and this is a very quick meeting put together, noticed accordingly. And with that, I'd like to recognize our county attorney, Christine Beck, so that she can speak to the issues of why we're here today.
Yes, thank you very much, Commissioner, and good evening, Board members. We are here today to discuss the Circuit Court ruling which was issued verbally on Monday, October 10th, in the Giroux versus Hillsborough County case, which was filed in late August. As you're all well aware, the litigation before the Circuit Court centered on the ballot question for the upcoming referendum on the transportation surtax. The ballot language in Ordinance 22-9 is virtually identical to the ballot language drafted for the 2016 Go Hillsborough Initiative, as well as the 2018 Charter Amendment. But most significantly, in the prior litigation relating to the 2018 Charter Amendment, the Circuit Court specifically approved virtually identical ballot language in a written order. I have provided a copy of that order, just simply so you have it for your reference. The judge ruled that the ballot language, quote, "more than adequately meets the requirement of Florida law." This ruling was not appealed and was not overturned by the Florida Supreme Court, so it really is the final word on that issue. This board justifiably relied on this ruling and presumably thought that using virtually identical ballot language was the most prudent and most legal ballot language to use. Moreover, because the surtax would benefit the municipalities and Hart, the ballot language was reviewed by countless competent attorneys, who all found it to be legally sufficient, in full compliance with Florida law, and not misleading, and it was judicially approved. We are aware of the work undertaken by this board to create Ordinance 22-9, to complete the OPAGA audit, and all other legal requirements to allow the citizens of this county to have a say on this issue, which frankly, we all know has been under review here for more than a decade. We fully understand the significance of this issue to this board and to this county. The issue is whether the citizens will have the opportunity to cast their vote for or against this proposed surtax, and ultimately whether their vote counts. Because this board justifiably relied upon judicially approved ballot language, it is our recommendation to seek a review of this important issue through the normal and customary appellate process, which is an appeal to the Second District Court of Appeal. I know that you and the citizens of Hillsborough County want to know if the votes may still be lawfully cast for or against this measure if an appeal is taken. We believe they can, and that voters should continue to vote for or against this measure. In a moment, I'm going to ask Chief Assistant County Attorney Rob Brazel to thoroughly explain in more detail the process for obtaining a stay of the judge's order while this is being reviewed. In our view, the stay of the enforcement of the order striking the ballot language is appropriate because it allows for the appellate review to be undertaken as provided for in Florida law, and if the review by the higher court finds that the ballot language is legally sufficient, the votes cast by Hillsborough County citizens by November 8th may be counted and acted upon. We are also seeking your approval to utilize specialized appellate counsel for the appeal, given the importance of this issue. I also want you to know that Attorney Mark Heron and counsel for the Supervisor of Elections are available for questions today. And I will now turn it over to Rob for a brief explanation of the rules relating to a stay, or for the preservation of the status quo. And the chair will then address the process for public comments, and we will hear from the public. We are, of course, available for any questions, and we provide our usual caution, reminding the board that since we are in litigation, the focus should be on providing guidance on the recommended appeal. So with that, I'll ask Rob to go into a bit more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Welcome, Mr. Rob. You're Brazel, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rob Brazel, Chief Assistant County Attorney, Litigation Division. As Christine mentioned, she wanted me to go over briefly the concept of a stay, which is something that results on appeal after a trial court has rendered an order, because that concept of the stay may have some effect on the election going forward. First of all, it's important to recognize that under the appellate rules, local governments and state government, when they appeal a trial court's ruling, they have an automatic stay. That's not afforded to other litigants. It's provided to government litigants because it allows government to continue and gives the government the ability to continue to conduct its business without the imposition of the trial court's order. What a stay basically is, is a timeout. It's a hold. It basically keeps the status quo. It puts the parties basically in a position as if the trial court's order had not happened. So in this case, what that means is that when Judge Moe enters her order, and she's not done that yet, we're not sure when that's going to happen, it may be tomorrow, could be over the weekend, not sure. But when she enters an order and assuming the board allows us and provides us the direction to appeal her order, an automatic stay would attach at that moment. Now, the other side, of course, has the ability to ask Judge Moe to lift the stay or vacate the stay, and she'll either grant or deny that motion. And then, once the case goes up on appeal to the Second District, the parties again have an opportunity to ask the Second District Court of Appeal to revisit the stay issue. So the bottom line is, and I think what we want to convey to you, is that we and our team of lawyers are going to do everything that we can to make sure that the stay stays in place all the way through the review process, because that's the way that our citizens are going to be able to vote on the referendum, is keeping the stay in place. But it's fairly simple, as long as the stay is in place, it's a green light for the election, and if the stay is lifted, it's a red light for the election. So essentially, you know, green is going to mean that the citizens can vote and the stay is in place, and if we get a red light, it's because either Judge Moe or the Second District has vacated the stay or lifted the stay, and then for that period, voting on the referendum would stop.
Excellent, thank you very much for that explanation. It's very helpful for us to understand not only the steps, but to make sure the public understands the steps that a stay would allow for them to continue voting however their desire, but continue voting on what they have received either in the mail already, since the mail out has already gotten the mail out, mail-in ballots have already been mailed out, and early voting begins October 24th. So I think it's critically important that we make sure our voters understand what their options are and what they can do with their right to vote. And I appreciate that. Are there questions by the rest of the board?
We will certainly be available, but if you want to go ahead and take public comment, then we can address your questions during the board discussion.
Excellent, thank you very much for that guidance. The board welcomes comments from citizens relating to the purpose of this special meeting, which is for the board to consider options subsequent to the Circuit Court ruling striking the ballot language regarding the transportation sales tax referendum. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to board members. However, it is requested at the same time that when you address the board, that comments are not directly personally against any commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issue. This is provided, this provides for mutual respect between the board members and the public. I will call on speakers by name in the order of which the request to speak was received. Prioritization is on a first come, first served basis. The boardroom seating capacity is 85 visitors for public comment and viewing. If the capacity is met, overflow will be accommodated in the first floor municipal multipurpose room. Base coverings are strongly encouraged in the boardroom, although not required. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted after being recognized by the chair by name. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker, however, this may need to be modified to accommodate speakers on this time-sensitive manner. There are, is, there actually are advertised public hearings scheduled to begin at 6:00 p.m., of which we are not only using this location, but also Robert Saunders for those people that have signed up to speak at that meeting at 6:00 p.m. So we will need to consider some time management challenges. Given that we have, I think it says 33 speakers, I'd like to hear from the board your thoughts about the amount of time to be allotted each speaker tonight, given our very full agenda. At this point, we're looking at an hour and 36, 39 minutes, almost an hour and, almost two hours, and we only have an hour or less than an hour before our next hearing that begins, is slated to begin at 6:00. Any comments from the board? Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would suggest that we go at one minute, one minute for public comments, and no more than a minute and a half.
Okay. Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've heard some of my colleagues on the board express that they're not in favor of going as low as a minute in the past, that it's just not enough time. But given the importance of this issue for our county, I think it's important to just stick with the normally allotted three minutes of time. It was this board that chose to schedule this meeting with constraints that, you know, would potentially only allow for an hour. That's not the public's fault. So I think we should hear everyone at fully allotted three minutes. And I believe, Ms. Beck, if I'm not mistaken, it's okay for us to start that 6:00 p.m. public hearing late, we just cannot by law start it any earlier. Is that correct?
You're absolutely correct, Commissioner. We will conclude this, and then you will need to move to your next one, but if it does run late, it doesn't pose any legal problems other than the delay.
And I have voted to limit the time before, but I take these issues on a case-by-case basis, and in this particular case, it was us that scheduled it an hour before a public hearing, so I would not be able to support any kind of a motion to reduce the time allotted to the speakers.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you, and I'll second Commissioner Myers. I'll just do 90 seconds, I think, a minute and a half is a good compromise with this. I think we have, for actual years, heard comment on this issue, and as to this particular night, we do have an urgency about this, and we have to look at the schedules that others can make, and there is an urgent need about this. So I think it's reasonable to allow for 90 seconds, and we do have a long meeting that will last tonight with a lot of agenda items. We will be here very late on this land use agenda that we have already scheduled. So I would second it at 90 seconds, if that's good with Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, I'll be supporting the motion. I typically want to lean on the side of allowing as much public comment as possible in most circumstances, but this is a specifically targeted issue that is before us tonight. So this is really not the time for big speeches about transportation in general, or any thoughts about beyond what we called this emergency meeting for. It is one specific topic, and that is whether or not to appeal the judge's order. So if you could consider, if the public could limit themselves to just their thoughts about, their comments about whether or not we should appeal this, I think that can be done in 90 seconds.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Smith. I agree, I normally, I too, I'm right there with you, Commissioner White. Normally, I would love, you know, I plan out, when I come, we used to come to these meetings, and I'd sit there and time it all out and count out the minutes I'd have, and make sure, practice it, and make sure I got it right so that I could make a decent presentation. This is a one question. This is definitely a one question. And it is a matter of addressing what we believe is how we, in my opinion, you know, protect the voter's right to vote on something, and what this board should choose to do. So with that, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. I'll support the motion for 90 minutes, so that's a minute and a half, and...
90 seconds.
90 seconds. Okay, I'm sorry, 90 seconds, so it's a minute and a quarter.
No, it's a minute and a half.
I thought it was a minute and a half, yeah, it's a minute and a half. Okay, I'm thinking that was a minute and a half, I think. Okay, so a minute and a half, and also, we have several people that are signed up to speak at the next meeting. So if we run on, you know, till 8:00, well, we will be here till midnight or more for the other folks that are waiting to speak on items they signed up for before this meeting was finished, signing up for the folks that are here. But I will respect all of those that have taken the time to sign up to speak, and we will have 90 seconds or a minute and a half. The clerk will show you the timer on the timer thing. It's green when it's go, when it gets to yellow, you just have, how many seconds when we do this? Are you going to give them 15 seconds?
30 seconds, ma'am.
Pardon?
30 seconds left.
30 seconds? So you've got 30 seconds left when the yellow shines up, and when it's red, your time is expired. And in order to respect everyone that would like to speak, we will get started. The first person that signed up to speak, oh, do we have a motion? Right. Can we take a roll call vote, since we don't have Commissioner Hagan here in the room?
Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
No.
Motion carried 6 to 1. Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you, thank you very much. To begin the public sector, as I mentioned earlier, I'll call you by name, and if you're here physically, you just come up to the podium. If you're on virtually, communications will open the channel for you so that you can offer your comment. The first speaker to sign up to speak is Sharon Calvert, and she is here in person, according to the record I have. Good evening, Ms. Calvert.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Calvert, and I'm chair of No Tax for Trucks. I've provided copies of the 2018 and 2022 ballot language and copy of the minutes from the August 16th meeting approving the financial impact statement. The financial impact statement was in the 2018 ballot, but it was missing, is missing in the 2022 ballot. Yet a meeting was held on August 16th that approved the financial impact statement required of all county referendums per Section 8.05 of the county charter. Dis discrepancy needs to be addressed by the board and the staff. Hart, we get the largest share. David Smith is Hart's legal counsel, and when he was speaking about the draft ballot language at April 4th meeting, he said regarding the ballot language that was agreed to by the county, and they moved back to language that was closer to the ballot initiative, and although that's primarily a political consideration, it is a set of verbs and provisions that has been approved once by the public and tests well with the public, and therefore we wanted to try to maximize the opportunity to attain approval of this referendum. The ballot language was politically polluted for political gain, and the ballot is now tainted. Voters must rely on clear, concise, and unambiguous ballot language to cast their vote. The only clear and ambiguous question the county commission can lawfully ask voters is to ask them to vote yes or no on a 30-year, one-person sales tax for transportation. That's it.
Your time has expired. Thank you for being here. The next speaker is Lena Gersman, who is attending virtually. Is Ms. Gersman available?
Madam Chair, Lena has not checked in.
Okay. The next speaker signed up to speak is Mickey Jacob, who is here in person.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm Mickey Jacob. I'm the office leader for Goodwin Mills Kaywood Architects here in Tampa, and I'm also a resident of Hillsborough County. But tonight I stand before you, representing the Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce as the Transportation Council Chair. The Tampa Bay Chamber is proud to be a financial supporter of the All for Transportation Initiative because we believe a 30-year investment to directly address pedestrian, vehicular, infrastructure, multimodal transportation, and transit options is vital to the common good of businesses, our county's growing workforce, and our local economy. Commissioners, this week's ruling striking the All for Transportation initiative from the ballot will set our transportation strategic efforts back decades, ultimately making Hillsborough County less competitive, less prosperous, and cause a devastating negative impact to the quality of life in this community. Your leadership is now critical to do whatever is necessary to avert the consequences of this ruling. The Tampa Bay Chamber has joined with countless community partners, expressing our desire for the B O C C to immediately retain specialized outside appellate counsel to appeal the ruling of the Circuit Court. We urge you to take this swift and aggressive action to uphold and protect the best interests of the future of Hillsborough County and return the AFT initiative to the ballot.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. The next person signed up in person to speak is Michael Moreno. There you are. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Moreno. I'm the executive director of the Westshore Alliance. Our organization endorsed the referendum in 2022, just as we did in 2018. Transportation has been the number-one economic development priority for the alliance since it was founded in 1983. Everyone in Hillsborough County can claim some form of transportation expertise. You're always a rider, a pedestrian, or a driver. The people have earned the right to use their expertise and decide what their transportation network should look like, because they know, as experts on transportation, they know what is best for their families, their businesses, and themselves, and they've earned the right to vote on this referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Scott Levinson, who's here in person.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Scott Levinson, a resident of Hillsborough County. I must say, what I was going to start off with today was about leadership and about the citizens having a voice. I believe we all agree there is a problem with transportation and infrastructure. I believe the disagreement was, how do we fund it? It was voted to be put on the ballot. It was ruled recently unlawful and misleading. And once again, we have all come here to speak and speak to you all as our Board of Leaders, leadership, and once again, you have limited our voice. And that is why we're here to begin with, because of misleading representation. And there will be many after me to speak for or against the tax, and I understand that. But we say that this same verbiage was on the ballot before, and we know it wasn't because the financial disclosure was not there. We are pointing fingers as a body at staffers, at judges. You all need to look in the mirror. You and your judgment has caused a question of whether citizens can vote or not.
Thank you for your time. The next speaker is Josie Fickey, who's also here in person.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Josie Fickey. I reside in Valrico, Florida. I'm against the transportation tax. And the reason is because of the continuous building around Hillsborough County. If you're so worried about the safety, stop the building and catch up the roads. You don't need more money. I feel that you're incompetent with what you've been given so far, and you've already been ordered to give back what you've taken, and you have not done that. So for that reason, I'm asking the people of Hillsborough County to write to the Attorney General, Ashley Moody, and investigate this board and the municipalities. And as I've looked and noticed, with every meeting, this is my third meeting on this tax, transportation tax, third time I've been before you, and you've limited our voices every time, every time, and that is getting very old to the people of Hillsborough County. You're an incompetent board, and I hope many of you will be replaced this election.
The next speaker is Demetra Simmons. The next three speakers, just to have people know they're here, are Bryce Bowden, virtual, Tara Simmons, virtual, and Kami Corbett in person. Welcome, Ms. Simmons.
Thank you, thank you for having me. I'm Demetra Simmons, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Partnership, and also a citizen and resident here in Hillsborough County. As you know, I lead a coalition of business leaders and not-for-profit leaders that work on the most pressing issues that affect our region. Transportation is number one. I'm going to keep my comments focused, as you guys asked for us to do this evening. We can't keep having the growth that we're having and be proud of that without addressing our transportation and transit needs, and for that, the partnership encourages you guys to appeal the decision and allow the voters to continue to vote, and exhaust all resources that we can use to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Bryce Bowden available online?
Madam Chair, both Bryce Bowden and Tara Simmons are not, have not showed up.
Have not signed in? Okay. If they should sign in, can you please notify us in between, just to make sure that we recognize their attempt to speak to this item?
Yes, Madam Chair.
The next speaker is Kami Corbett.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward &amp; Henderson, and I'm actually here in my capacity as an executive board member of both NAOP, the Commercial Real Estate Organization, and TBBA, the Tampa Bay Builders Association. Normally, I leave these kind of events to our public affairs consultants, but unfortunately, due to the emergency nature of the meeting, they were not available, and so I'm just here to wave the flag in support of you doing whatever it takes to ensure that we have a dedicated funding source for transportation. So thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker in person is Marcia Fernandez. After that is Nathan Hagan, and both of those individuals are here in person, I understand. Marcia Fernandez? All right. Nathan Hagan?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nathan Hagan. I'm a lead of a group called YIMBY Tampa. Y-I-M-B-Y stands for Yes in My Backyard. We're a local volunteer chapter of YIMBY Action, who are driving land use reforms that make cities like ours more affordable, sustainable, equitable across the country. Our mission is typically driven by housing and land use reform that creates housing for all. The issue of housing attainability is not just about zoning and physical structures, though. It's about giving people equitable access to jobs, family, community, and public infrastructure. Last month, our voting members unanimously endorsed this referendum because that's what the plan would do, give people more equitable access to jobs, family, community, and public infrastructure. Please take any steps necessary to give people in our county their due access to jobs, community, and infrastructure, including appealing the cynical and partisan judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is virtual attendance, George Nieman. After that, in person, is Christian Leon and Josh Wustel. Is Mr. Nieman on the line?
I certainly am.
Excellent, you're recognized, sir.
Good evening, ladies chairperson and board and public. I am here to say that I am against continuing with this defective ballot. I would sort of challenge Attorney Beck when she says, she talks about how the ballot language was sort of approved. It wasn't, those were not the issues that the Florida Supreme Court dealt with. That was not the issue that raised it to the Supreme Court for their decision. So I think it's still valid for us to argue that it's... So I think it's still valid for us to argue that it's misrepresentation, and it's what we call puffery. And in marketing terms, puffery is, you expect that if it's a sideshow at a carnival or someone selling door-to-door vacuum cleaners. They're going to just state, "The world will be beautiful if you buy my vacuum." But when you say, in the, one of the bullets says, "Build and widen roads," and then when you look at this slice of a slice of a slice that would be dedicated to do that function, you realize that most, most roads, there's going to be very little road building and widening because you just don't have the money to do it. You've sent the majority of it over to mass transit. And some folks want to try and do this and make it rail. But those of us in East Hillsborough--
Thank you, Mr. Niemann. Your time has expired. Thank you. The next speaker is Christian Leon, who's in person. Not seeing him. The next speaker is Joshua Wustel.
I wish I could stand here before you, surprised at your cowardice to limit our time to speak, particularly from the same group of people that beats the drum for the right to voters to have their voice. Those of you that are saying that we have the right to vote, I forgive you for not being in the courtroom like I was in the courtroom, where you didn't hear the judge inform you that what you did was intentionally mislead the voters so they don't have the right to vote on something that you intentionally misled them on. And I'm hoping that you can hear that words and not make the same mistake as the county's attorney did when he tried to re-educate the judge on what the term "included" means. The term "misled" means that you intentionally misled the voters to understand what they were voting for. Do you understand that? You are not protecting their right to vote on something. You are trying to ram an illegal tax that you intentionally, which came to light during the hearing if you were there, demonstrated that you intentionally misled them to vote again All for Transportation, two times losers, again on an illegal tax. Misled them. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Belinda Noah. Excuse me. Is Belinda Noah available?
Madam Chair, Belinda has not checked in.
Okay. Thank you very much. Tom Rask is also attending virtually, and after that is Karen Jones and Taryn Sabia. Tom Rask, you're recognized.
Good evening, Tom Rask, Penales County. I can see that this is going to be, we're going to get a bum rush, the voters. We're going to be, we're not, voice is not going to be heard, so I'll just cover a couple of things quickly. Weasel words like "virtually" identical language were used. Ms. Beck knows, as any first-year law student knows, that you could add or subtract one word from a ballot measure, and it would change it from being legal to illegal or vice versa. Instead, I'm going to spend my time raising what I believe is a sunshine law violation. Ms. Myers was quoted in the Tampa Bay Times, saying, "We're going to appeal this." There's no way she could know this unless she had spoken to the other board members or polled you for your votes. So as Ms. Beck knows, the cure for sunshine law violation is that Ms. Myers would disclose the nature of her conversations or polling of the, with the other commissioners or board members. I believe you're getting bad legal advice here. Maybe that's what you want, and you're trying to make the citizens responsible for the tax cycle, which was discussed in the courtroom as opposed to you. You can give Harkmore money. You just have to raise the mileage rate. If you think that's what you should do in this time of inflation, do it. Go ahead and raise the mileage rate and be accountable to the voters. Again, I repeat, I believe there is a sunshine law violation here, as reported in the Times.
Thank you. Is Karen Jones available to speak?
Madam Chair, Karen has not checked in.
And Taryn Sabia? She's also attending virtually.
Taryn, can you hear us?
Good evening. I can. Can you hear me?
You're recognized, ma'am. You have 90, 90 seconds.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening. I do appreciate you calling this emergency meeting on the topic. I will be very brief and say that it is imperative that you do whatever you can to appeal the decision made earlier this week in order to get the referendum on this ballot term. I do support the referendum being on the ballot and would very much appreciate the board working to allow the voters the chance to vote yet again for the transportation tax referendum. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Harrison Lundee, also attending virtually. After that is Julia Winston and Carmen Edmonds. Is Harrison Lundee available?
Madam Chair, Harrison has not checked in.
Okay. And Julia Winston?
This is Julia Winston.
Ms. Winston, you're recognized. Go right ahead. You have 90 seconds.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I've lived in Tampa for 30 years, and the traffic is very bad, and I fully support the initiatives to fund transportation to be on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, the next speaker is Carmen Edmonds, and then after that will be Diane Davison. Is Carmen Edmonds virtually attending?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Excellent. You're recognized. You have 90 seconds, ma'am.
I oppose the appeal, and I oppose this tax. It was illegally done last time, and like others have stated, that it has not been returned to the taxpayer. And I just, I do not agree with the way that it's worded. Again, yet again, you all are trying to trick the voter into giving you what you want. You already have money. You just, you have a billion dollars that you can spend towards this without having to tax the taxpayers. And the people that you're going to be taxing to use these services, you're going to tax them out of where they're living because we're already one of the highest tax-rated counties in the state of Florida, and we're just putting undue burden on the people who need the transportation in the first place. So I think that there are better ways that you can come up with the money. I agree with the other lady, too. If we're having transportation problems, put a moratorium on buildings and fix the transportation problems in some of these areas, as well as schools and firehouses and everything else that's needed, but you're throwing up stuff all over the county without thinking through, you need schools, you need firehouses, you need police stations, you need transportation and infrastructure, and those things are not happening. You all need to be accountable to those things, and you need to be accountable to the way you're spending the money that you already have. Thank you.
The next speaker is, is it Carmen Edmonds? Is Diane Davison? Ms. Davidson available?
Yes, hello, Commissioners.
You are, you're recognized.
Yes, hello, Commissioners. I'm here to urge you not to appeal the recent ruling on the sales tax referendum. Your marketing campaign has done enough damage. Your own $700,000 website, transportationhillsborough.com, that uses the TPO's LRTP 2045 data and info has been proven inaccurate. All the information presented to the public meetings and the memo to you by your own John Lyons somehow is missing from this website. This is evidence of using taxpayer dollars to deceive rather than to inform. If you appeal, it may go to the Supreme Court. You could owe the people hundreds of millions of dollars, on top of the hundreds of million dollars you still owe us from the last screw-up. Your arrogance is astounding and is only exceeded by your poor stewardship of our money. The people of Hillsborough deserve better.
There's the next speaker, assuming she's done. The next speaker is Deborah Owens.
Good evening. This ballot initiative is automatically invalidated because the November ballot does not include a separate financial impact statement beneath the ballot question as required by the county's charter, 8.05. The tax initiative presented on the ballot is illegal and should not be on the ballot by virtue of the county's own rules. The judge's bench order on Monday is correct. Hiring an attorney to appeal the ruling is a waste of money, funds that could be used to fill potholes. The wording of this ballot initiative breaks state law, according to a news article I read, because ballot initiative wording must be precise and specific. The wording for the proposed tax increase initiative is vague and therefore deceptive. The initiative reads like a sunny laundry list of proposed repairs that I and other voters can weigh in on. This is false. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mike Lamarca, and after that will be Lesam Ramos.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Lamarca. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Lamarca. I live in 23598. This ballot initiative should not go forward. It should not be put on the ballot. The income from this would be roughly 4% of your budget. Now, I don't think there's anyone anywhere in this county that would agree that the county is 96% efficient with their, with their current money now. The money is available inside the money, the money that the county already has. We all want the transportation, but we think you need to do a better job of budgeting to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker, Lesam Ramos, also attending virtually.
Madam Chair, Lesam has not signed in.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tim Pearson, who's here in person. Following that is Robert Emerson, Donald Byansky, and then Vanessa Vasquez. Mr. Pearson?
Good evening. Tim Pearson, President, Hillsborough County Firefighters, Local 2294. I rise in support of allowing the voters to make their own self-determination and make a decision on this tax. It's clear to them that it's a 1% sales tax that everybody will be paying, that everybody will be benefiting from, as it's going towards things that everybody uses. From a public safety perspective, growth in Hillsborough County is outpacing infrastructure projects year after year. We've seen increase in call volume. We've seen increase in, in need, and we haven't seen the same increase in that infrastructure spending. We know that every year we fall behind infrastructure projects, the more each one costs, and they're backing up. So from my perspective, we're watching mom and dad fight, and the citizens and the voters are suffering because of it. I support voters being able to determine for themselves if they think it's worth investing their money in our shared resources. So if possible, give the voters the opportunity and let them determine if they're willing to contribute to these shared resources. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Emerson, who's attending virtually.
This is Robert Emerson. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County in Apollo Beach. The court ruled correctly. Do not attempt to restore the tax. The reason, the only way the proponents can get the people to vote for this tax is through misleading descriptions because unincorporated areas are swindled by this tax as they get few, if any, resources. Also, why has the people's money not yet been refunded to them from the first illegal tax? We've already been through this, and here, one and a half years after the Supreme Court ordered that the people should get their money back, they still don't have it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donald Byansky.
Madam Chair, Donald has not signed in.
Okay. Next speaker is Vanessa Vasquez, also virtually attending.
Yes, I'm here. This is Vanessa Vasquez.
You're recognized, ma'am. Go ahead.
We all know that the county transportation improvements are needed, but lying, cheating, and manipulating what is on the ballot and to the people of this county is disgraceful. You're not being honest with what you're going to do with the taxpayer funds, and this is just not the way to do it. People need to be informed correctly. The ballot that you have suggested promises money on roads, but the ordinance limits the spending of roads to 4%. It's not being, it's not being exposed. That information is not being told to the voters correctly, and so to say that you want to put this on the ballot, people are not being informed. This is misleading. The judge was correct in her ruling, and I implore the board not to try and appeal this. You mentioned earlier, I think your attorney mentioned earlier, that this has been a 10, a decade process, a decade-long process. It is time for the board to get a clue. We do not want this on the ballot. Keep your hands off of our wallets. Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Strandberg, who is in person.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chris Strandberg. I'm the State Legislative Affairs Director for Americans for Prosperity, Florida, and a Hillsborough County resident. We at AFP have followed this initiative for over four years, dating back to the original referendum and when it was re-raised again at the start of 2020. We continue to oppose this newest version of the transportation surtax. On its face, it's a poorly-written referendum that misleads county residents as to how the collected revenues are going to be spent. We support Judge Mo's decision. We implore you to stop wasting taxpayers' time and money trying to get a stay and appealing the order. Our residents are already hurting due to higher inflation. Now you want to spend their money on an appeal to further tax them? Are you truly being stewards of the people of this county by fighting to keep this misleading referendum on the ballot? AFP Florida urges you to stop wasting Hillsborough residents' hard-earned tax dollars by continuing to pursue the referendum that has already been struck down twice. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lori Gage, attending virtually.
Madam Chair, Lori has not checked in.
Okay. And the next speaker in person is Ron Weaver, who's, Mr. Weaver?
Thank you. Please appeal for safer sidewalks for our kids, for the 300,000 people who are disabled. Please appeal because the words required for this ballot, the Supreme Court said they should be your words. These are your words. They're not misleading words. They do everything that the 12 cases ever decided on the subject by the Florida courts have said, which are, number one, does it show the true effects? Number two, does it show the chief purpose? These are your words, not the voters' words. Your words are required by the Florida Supreme Court. Please help those 57% of the folks who voted for it the first time to please be redeemed in their need to fix their roads. They've been waiting 23 years to find the opportunity. They've shown you four years ago. They desperately need your help. 100,000 new people since need your help even more. Please appeal. Please take care of those 57% of the folks who voted for it the first time, and the 100,000 new folks who are even more desperate need to fix our roads and bus and rail and get on with our future. Please appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. That was the last person that I have signed up. Did any of the other names that I called, I'll wait till the fire engines go by, and any other persons that I called their name that checked, that were attending virtually that we were able to get connected since we started communications?
Madam Chair, we do have a number. It's unidentified. If you would like us to identify, we can do that now.
Please do.
Call-in user ending in the number 56, can you please identify? I have an 813 number that ends in 56. Can you please identify? Madam Chair, they don't seem to be responding, and that's the only number I've got left, but it's not identified on our list.
Okay. Thank you very much for attempting to reach that individual. With that, we'll close public comment and open it up for board discussion and a consideration of any vote or action that should be taken this evening. And we're amazingly close to 6 o'clock, so. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to thank our citizens for coming and sharing your comments with us. Then, after hearing comments from our county-- Then, after hearing comments from our county attorney, Christine Beck, and Chief Assistant County Attorney, Robert Brazil, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair. I move that we direct the county attorney's office to, one, file a notice of appeal as recommended in the agenda backup, and, two, seek a stay from the circuit court orders when filed to ensure the status quo until the appellate review has concluded in order to allow voters to continue to cast their votes, and, three, that we approve of the hiring of a special appellate counsel to assist us with this important issue. Now's the time, and the time is now, that we continue to allow our voters to vote for this transportation tax. We all, this board, we all understand the importance of why we're here and why we need to have this tax passed this November. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe the ballot language is misleading, and I alluded to this when the ballot language was adopted. Roads are mentioned first in the ballot language, yet they are not first in appropriations by a long shot. Mass transit is mentioned, yet there's no mention that the likely focus would be on a downtown trolley. And finally, any future county commission could change these appropriations because they were done by ordinance. A future county commission could decide that it doesn't want to fund mass transit with these revenues. It could decide that it doesn't want to fund roads, sidewalks. You have it. You name it. There's also the issue of the three unincorporated communities that are mentioned by name, yet they would be treated no differently than the rest of unincorporated Hillsborough County. Orange County currently has a referendum on their ballot that simply says that the revenues would be dedicated exclusively to transportation and transit improvement uses authorized by law, plain and simply. That's all we need to do here in Hillsborough County. An appeal will tie this up likely for four to six years. I know from my very own lawsuit, and we skipped the second DCA in my lawsuit, I'll remind you, and went straight to the Florida Supreme Court, and it took nearly four years to get it resolved. So an appeal here is likely to tie this up for four to six years. This issue will end up at the Florida Supreme Court, and I do not believe that this board is on solid legal footing. I also want to remind this board that the Florida Supreme Court did put comments about the ballot language on the record during the hearing for my lawsuit. I also want to add that there is television footage of a TV reporter telling her viewers that it does not matter how voters vote on this item. They could vote either way, or they could simply not vote on it, and it's not going to count. That's gone on. People have voted for three and a half days with this kind of information circulating. That is almost certain to play out in the court system. And that'll affect voters on both sides of this issue, by the way. There's also information circulating that this referendum may be in violation of Section 8.05 of our very own county charter because of the lack of a financial impact statement. This is an issue that is likely to be litigated. I'm not trying to be an obstructionist. I'm not inserting politics into this issue. I'm just looking at it pragmatically. An appeal would be a waste of taxpayer resources and could tie this up for four to six years. And ironically, ironically, my position in opposing an appeal is likely to benefit those in support of this tax as much as it would be applauded by those who oppose it. That's my position, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we're-
We can't hear you, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Any better?
It's a little better. Is there- Communications, can you assist in his volume at all?
Commissioner Hagan, we might need you to turn your microphone volume up. Do you know how to do that, sir?
My speaker volume is up.
Now you're good. Now you're good, sir. Now we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm going to keep my remarks brief, because I know we're running late. For 14 years, I have consistently said that to adequately address our unfunded needs, a dedicated funding source is needed. I think we all recognize this. That being said, I'm going to restate what I said during our last discussion on this issue. The last referendum has not been disposed of, and in my opinion, there are significant economic and policy concerns that makes this the wrong plan at the wrong time. From my perspective, the recent court decision only reaffirms that, and I feel that we should regroup and work on a more balanced transportation plan that will benefit the entire county. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
And of course, I'm supporting the motion to appeal. But I'd just like to really make, first of all, a thank you to our legal team, because I think they did yeoman's work in both the drafting of this, in the research and everything. To Christine Beck, I know Sam Hamilton was very, very involved and engaged in Robert Brazil- Brazel. And, sorry. And I know that we're, you know, this is a very, has been a very heavy lift, and I just want to make sure to put that appreciation out, because I think we're so well-represented, and I'm very pleased to have that, and it gives me great confidence. So I'd just like to express that. And secondly, just that we need to just move forward. This has been a single judge's decision at the local level here, and we really need to move this forward at this time and have it, have this appeal in place. We've done a good job, and we need to move forward. Not, I'll just say, just for the record right now, there's a lot of resources out there for transit initiatives that have been, that are sitting there now, and it's a little heartbreaking to see across the country, every small, little community that has been able to leverage by having a very de minimis local match, the kinds of transit investments that are available right now, that we don't know, you know, where they will be in the future for us to act on. So in a special way, I think that timing is so important.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, too, want to thank our county attorneys for working so fast on this, and thank all the citizens for coming out tonight at this short-notice emergency meeting as we had to deal with this sudden turn of events regarding an issue that is now, right now, going before the voters. The timing is really unfortunate, and it's sabotaging the rights of our citizens to vote on this important issue. As our county attorney noted, the language that we put on the ballot is substantially the same as the language that the Citizen Initiative put on the ballot in 2018. The citizens put this language on the ballot in 2018. It's the same language that the citizens of this county collected reams of petitions to pass the high hurdles of putting a Citizen Initiative on the ballot. And they succeeded in putting this on the ballot so they could vote on it. And it's the same language that the voters approved by a huge margin in 2018. It is not misleading language. Everybody understands the language easily. People are for it. People are against it. People don't want to pay the tax. People are desperate to contribute and invest in our transportation and help people get to work and help connect people with jobs. It's not misleading. We understand it, and everybody deserves the chance in this county to vote on whether they want to fund transportation in this way. And so I think the important takeaway from this, if I can count votes, is that if we appeal, our citizens can continue voting on this referendum that they've been trying desperately to pass for several years, and that we, their elected officials, are doing everything we can to see to it that they're, that they get this opportunity to vote. Vote pro, vote con, but vote. And we're doing everything we can to make sure your votes will be counted. We're fighting for the rights of our citizens to vote on this, and we will fight in court. And I don't see why we wouldn't win. This is language that has been passed by the courts up one side and down the other already. We got a single judge who has a single decision, the right thing to do is to appeal this, as we are advised by our county attorneys. And so I hope that our citizens will not be confused by what some news reporter mistakenly told them on the news. I hope they won't be confused by the smoke and mirrors that are being put out there saying, oh, we, this is confusing, or this is blah, blah, blah. I hope our citizens will just go vote on this referendum and take every opportunity to go vote and have your voice heard. That's what we're working for. That's what I'm working for. That's what this motion is, would help us do. That's what our attorneys are fighting hard for us, to have the right for all our citizens to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
I also want to start out by thanking the county attorney and everyone that was involved and has been involved in this process, because it's been, it's been a long, long road, and the road is clearly not defined for us yet. The bottom line of the matter is that we remain a very unsafe place to be a pedestrian, an unsafe place to be a bicyclist, and our citizens are trapped in traffic every single day. And the growth, the growth that is not stopping is going to continue to tax our infrastructure, and the longer we wait to start to fix these problems, the more it is going to cost. Inflation is a two-way street. It hits our citizens. It also hits governments when we go to pay for projects. And if this initiative is put off by years, you can bet that when we finally get to do the work, we're going to get a lot less for our dollars than if we would have done it now or if we would have done it in 2018, the first time that the voters voted for it. I know that the people of this county desperately want a say in their own future, and so I'm going to support the motion, because what is the danger in allowing people to vote? At this point, people have already started voting. It's on the ballot. We have three and a half weeks until the election. Let's see it through, because I'm confident that the people of this county want to see some real change, and it's going to start at the ballot box.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen. I'm going to wrap this up, because I think we need to take a vote on this, but I did want to offer a little bit of insight on what I'm concerned about. The fact that there is an issue out here where we are being accused of being unclear is really fascinating, when we are told on a regular basis that by the very same people that are concerned about this issue, that we still have their money from the 2018. I am hugely grateful to the legislature that came and added a budget proviso that allowed the monies that were collected, in good faith, as far as we were concerned, but we had a lawsuit, so we collected the funds, and it's now sitting with the Department of Revenue, waiting for the Legislative Budget Committee to make decision based on Judge Barbas's ruling on how that money should be spent on transportation in Hillsborough County. We don't have that, those dollars. We're not keeping those dollars from our taxpayers, and trust me, we would have spent it on transportation had we had access to it. And now it's probably a quarter of what it could have done due to the cost of inflation by having it delayed by the first lawsuit. So when we are talking about whether or not we're wasting taxpayers' money by defending the right of our voters to vote on this, I find it challenging, and I find it our duty to protect that vote and to appeal this issue, as well as to protect the ability to stay so that voters can continue to vote on this referendum. Thank you very much for your time this evening. We ran over about five minutes, and I'm not seeing any other further comments. Please take a roll call vote.
Olbermann?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Thank you. Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Hagan and White voted no.
Thank you very much. And are there any other comments or discussions before we adjourn this meeting and take a little bit of break and open up our second public hearing that was due to start at 6:00 at 6:20? With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.